This Thursday, two to four. Okay, is there anything tomorrow? Seventeen? I can't remember where it is. It must be related to the store. Which game? Okay. Across the hall. Okay. Blue. Not, not back in session yet. We can't come back in until ten. Is it yesterday?
Or day?
Yesterday, Saturday you were working for us, weren't you? Trying to get your attention, kind of threw out an inform on the picture window. It didn't make any noise. There were all those shells. I thought it was something. How's that blocking?
Oh, you know what? I did hear something I thought was a bird.
Actually, just a deer. Yeah. I think it's still up there. It landed on my head. You want to talk about this, them, or? Okay. That's just me. Is it easier for you to find in their office information about their maintenance road, your road, possibly, or abandoned? Or is that Mary's office?
Pulling it up on the map. It's the information I have.
And it doesn't, to my knowledge, it doesn't say anything. I have some more look on the map. But Mary was going to do some research. She has the tech. Section got shit for it.
Were they closed?
Yeah, if it was ever closed, because it doesn't have, or vacated. Yeah, we just don't know because it doesn't show. They would have. Oh, wait. We were looking in the wrong office. I'm going to tell Mary she looked this on.
Some of the road records will not show up.
Only if we, if somebody walked it over there and.
Well, yeah, sometimes those just depend, some of those vacation or resolutions apply.
Would be a resolution.
Because you, you do want to have a record when you're buying a property. The property line goes up to the city line. Okay. But that, there's no guarantee, you know, nineteen ninety-six, they were all known.
That's after.
Hi, Erin.
For me?
Okay.
Your name?
Do you want to keep this, or? Who needs a touch of light on us? Me. Oh, yeah. Who, yeah? Interesting.
It's twenty thirteen.
It shouldn't have been four, not seventy-five. No, that's not abandoned.
It was in here, well, I'll talk about that later.
It, it is. You might call Mary and tell her to. Okay, I got ten blocks, so we'll go ahead. So in matter of this road. It appears that it is not abandoned or closed. So how do you guys want to approach this?
I don't think that, from looking at it. Number one, if it is still a viable road that we are supposed to maintain, has been maintained hour long. I don't feel comfortable with allowing them to put a cattle bar up across there as a good stamp to it because of the county liability.
I agree. Yeah, I don't want to spend any money on it.
I, I would recommend that we just go through the process of abandoning.
You want to.
Since it goes to a dead end, I think we just need to hands off and go.
That would be my opinion. This letter from December, this time, twenty seventeen, indicates that it was not abandoned or closed. Apparently that they recommended to not do any of it because they approached them seven years ago on the same set of circumstances. So a request, so I agree.
So if we, if we don't abandon it, we're still going to have to spend money on it because we have to take those and then clean it up to the point where it can be crowded up and down because they're going to have to build fence in there. We also have to probably do higher level survey work to make sure that we're over the ditches, need to be, and those types of things. I think it becomes a conversation again with him. The only way to do this is to abandon that.
And it will have to be on the other side too.
And so we would have to send out a notice to both and, you know, abandon it. I always hesitate a little bit when it comes to abandoning a road because it will never get that back.
True. But from looking at it.
Do you have thoughts on it? No, I think you're right. I mean, basically, the only question, you can get it back, you have to vacate it.
Right, yeah.
From, from looking at it, it looks like the road only went back to that section line anyway. Does not appear that there is a road going north and south on there?
Not in north and south, but it goes east and west.
Does not appear to, does it?
Goes all the way, one seventy-eight picks up over on the other side of where the war shot is.
Check that.
Well, was there a bridge over there at one time?
Because that's what I'm saying, if you go, if you go look at the.
If you come in off of B road? B and one seventy-eight, it's gravel going west, isn't it?
X.
Bx.
Bx.
Not what I'm seeing here. Right here, it's, we're, it's humming right here, right in the middle of the road. That's what we're looking at, right there.
Right, that's one seventy-eight right there.
Yes.
And it is gravel.
Didn't we say that this here is just a path through his field, and this is the road you're actually looking at? It's this?
Correct.
And then it ends right here?
Right, that is correct.
So that's what I'm saying, it goes no farther east, goes no more, nowhere north and south.
Yeah. We just have to get the information. I'm fine with abandoning or closing. What's the difference, Todd, between abandoning and closing?
Well, I think, I, I use the term, I thought the term.
Closing and vacating.
Closing and vacating. Closing is just stating that you're, you know, blocking it off officially.
So is that an option, that we can block it off officially, but still not vacated and still on?
I think, yeah, you can. If you, I think you have to, you have to make some kind of determination that the existing condition of the road, due to the fact, makes some kind of finding why it is not traveling frequently in those dangerous conditions.
Would you be open to just closing it versus vacating? Because there's a difference. If we vacate it, it's no longer ours. But if we close it because of it's not drivable, because now they have to actually drive onto the landowner's property to get down it, would you be open to that?
I'd be, I'd be open to that, but I, like I said, I don't, I don't believe that we need to do any maintaining of that road or any surveying of that road because.
That may be a solution for him because then he can bring that, that fence that runs along W four on up, put a gate on it. If we closed it, then he has the rights to put a gate on or cattle crossing.
And so we would have no federal liability for that road, correct?
But it's closed.
Well, I don't know about liability for the road.
Liability is somebody drove over the cattle bar and I don't want the county to allow it for anything to happen.
Yeah, I, I don't know if there's, if that produces kind of liability to the road if the section is still in existence. But you have.
Be easier if we just put a gate in.
Yeah, that's what I was, you know, you were telling me, somebody's blocking it off, whether, I mean, either it's the tenant or the landlord. If the landlord or the landlord's permission, you know, put a gate up there, that's fine. But if not, we close it, I think you've got a duty to block it off somehow. But if you guys put a gate in there, put something.
A sign up that says it's.
Close or closed. I think, I'd have to look at it and remember the case now.
I think I would want a little more clarification on if we closed it.
Versus vacating?
Versus vacating, what the county's liability would still be for that road.
Okay, you want to do a little bit of research on that and then good, have it bring back next week and.
We'll, I'll reach out to Mr. Brown and let him know the direction we're headed.
Because this, this letter from seventeen does not really indicate anything. We find that this road has neither been abandoned or closed. Okay. What was there reasoning for not doing anything?
Because at that time, if I remember the conversation back, back with the minutes, he was.
Well, this was seventeen, he was in here after that, I believe, Mr. Brown was, and talked to us about that same road. I believe that he was in here last year asking about this same thing, but I don't quite remember what he wanted to do, whether he wanted to put a gate up or cattle bar or whatever. Do you, do you recall that?
I do remember him being in here about a year and a half ago, and he told me that. But I think what he, he wasn't interested in abandoning the road at that point in time. But I don't know that we ever talked about just closing the road, which I'm not sure we even talked about whether we had that ability. But it seems like the answer would be if we can close the road and he can put a gate up and we put a sign up, that's the best of both worlds because if, for some reason, twenty-five, thirty years from now, somebody would develop over that area and want a county road, we haven't given up the right to have the county road. That's always my concern.
And I, I agree. But like I said, what I, what I want to know is what our responsibility is. If we close, if we close it and not abandon, what are we responsible?
There are some situations where abandoning a road and letting it go back to landowner makes perfect sense. I'm not sure it does in this one. Because who knows, again, fifty years from now. When we're not around, I hate to close something down. We didn't own both sides of the road either, if we did, like we did Russell.
Reader out west.
At Russell Reader after he owned both sides of the law. Road made sense, if this doesn't follow that path.
Okay.
But I don't think we should spend any money, tributaries or keep it.
Not this way.
Be the best of both worlds.
Yeah.
All right, Kate?
Did you have a chance to read the minutes?
I have to. Do you need to do that?
Well, I think, probably the long and short of it is, is they've got, they've made a lot of changes in public comment that might be more, I don't think, you know, I read it, they didn't prove it and sent it to you guys. I didn't see it, so I don't think it's there.
Of these?
Yeah, the burial. And I'm trying to, I guess, I'm, I'm thinking that, you know, just still the process still needs to get to a conclusion at that, that level.
This is, this is the cemetery, the.
Family cemetery.
Family, family cemetery, so.
So what, what are you looking at, are you looking at this?
Yeah, is this the beat of it, or?
So what's in blue? Is what the planning commission wanted to put in.
Okay.
What changed. So in green, they wanted to put in the KSA number. And that wasn't put in there, that was just something I looked up, and I think that that addresses it. There was discussion about that that state law only refers to body being transported to, where it can be transported to, but not by. So white and pink right there is suggesting maybe to put that KSA number after the state law. And if you, as that county commission, want to stipulate that it's by a license, then that's county and not state law. Because I didn't see anywhere in the state law that it said by a license.
It might have been in the statute.
Was it brought up also about contagious disease?
Yes.
Okay.
And I, I haven't been able to find the statute on that either, and I was going to refer.
I've read it. I don't remember it right off the top of my head, but if it's contagious infectious disease, it cannot be buried there, now who reports that? To whom and to what department, say? The funeral director says for the, we don't really have a coroner here in the county, it's a multi, it's a multi-county coroner. So do they report it to a certain department? This is a contagious disease this person passed from, and it cannot be buried there. I mean, there's somewhere, it looks like a lap in between, you know, just. You see where I'm coming from?
I mean, maybe it's a conception of powers that could happen, because I always consider the fact that the burial was the convenience after the usual requirements of laws, right? Being any.
Just going to have the gap.
I wasn't going to have, like, people lying in bed and then getting buried the next day. They would be, they have to, and I think that's part, parcel of the fact that I don't think, I don't know that state law allows you to just do that.
Well, you have to, if it's non-embalmed, it has to be buried, I think, within twenty-four hours, I believe, and you cannot have a visitation of any kind. So was that discussed about a visitation or anything with a non-embalmed body?
And that was, maybe that's, I was, I was under the impression that this was like, it's still going to go to the funeral home or whatever. Had to do that, and I probably wouldn't have objection to the added language, you know, nobody immediately buried a contagious disease, but if, you know, some official allowed that to happen because they can't believe they don't.
But we don't have, we don't have that, we don't state that for cemetery, right?
Yeah, yeah, and that's what I mean, it's like.
So there's no difference between a private and a public in the way we handle any piece of that, the body or any, any of that?
At least that's intended, I think.
So that needs to be put in there?
Well, here's, I think, this is where it gets really kind of funky because I think now that it's front of them, their procedure has to run towards.
Meaning what?
Meaning that I think they have to bring something to you guys before you can change. I think you can tell Kate here what you guys are thinking. But, you know, like, here's, here's the problem, this is that there's a process that this goes and that people are, who are interested in this regulation right now, or may not be here, because they have no idea that you guys talked about. And so if the planning commission reaches its end point, whatever that is, then they send it up to you to be approved, you guys can sit here and say, well, I mean, I know what it said, but that, we don't like X, Y, and Z. And who sent it back with instructions to say, you know, X, Y, and Z is wrong or whatever? But we can't short circuit that process by basically amending it.
And then passing it.
And then, and then that, you know, at least I'm open, but you could, I mean, I don't think there's any problem saying to Kate here to follow through them, say, the intention of, at least me and Kate, it was, is that this is not one where people are just going to take a body and have it sit there for however long and bury it three days later.
I mean, what is our, in our regulations, do we have something on, are public cemeteries?
No.
We don't have any of that.
No, so it's assumed that, you know, a public, it's going to be state or local city, and there are going to be requirements.
And I think basically, you know, apartments, there's a little zoning usually, unless, in my experience, it's all state law, meaning that, you know, representing, representing the city, they've never had a burial question.
That's kind of what, in, in the minutes, as Dick Lee said, state laws always come through.
So it's like, I think that's, you know.
State law is going to be followed also.
Yeah, and that's kind of the, he's getting the point there, which is that there's only so much, you guys can fill in the gaps, but you can't overrule the state law. By passing a reg that says something exactly opposite. So that's kind of why you started out with the idea here, I suppose, maybe that wasn't clear in what we're doing, is that this is truly a burial situation where your, you know, body instead of being transported to public cemetery after everything that's you need to done, they're being transported to that home. Very different.
Is it, do we need to put that in, or is it just going to be assumed state law?
Well, I think that that could be.
Let's put, let's put in there that all state laws regarding burial will be followed. I don't know that we need to list them, it's not our responsibility to list them. If, if, if a person's in the hospital, any situation where somebody dies, they have to follow state law. The only thing we're saying is you now have the right, if you put this cemetery within a hundred feet of waterline, you may bury that person on your property.
Yeah, that's, that's.
If that information has been, if that property has been, they've got to ask to have a burial plot, which is why we're putting this in. So that there's a, there's a record for a hundred years from now?
Yeah, well, I mean, and I think the key question, the key way to conceive of it is, is that this comes during a plague. They die, they go to the funeral home or whoever, be processed, bomb, how are we going to say that?
I think it's all been processed. That brings, that brings my hole into the fence.
Yeah, it's really green, I know. But you, yeah, so, so you've got your, and then it's time to bury, where are you burying? Whatever, you have a true service or the interior service or whatever, then let's bury it. Grave site, where's that at? That's at the house. That's the only thing. And, you know, probably, I, I would imagine there may be regs on that anyway, and I would say that's probably not bad addition, just to reinforce it.
So can we rewrite this, put those in, and then send it back to them stating, stating these are our suggestions?
I think, well, I don't think we can. I would rather not have us do that. I would have you be the transmitter of kind of the concept. And so I think it's a good addition to say, say, first, we just want to say that, you know, our little eye has changed, there's a new one, you know, it says, all embalming and treatment of bodies to be enforced, again, state law, unless otherwise. According to state law.
And that would be the first.
Yeah, that'd be like, yeah, little one is now.
State law.
You know, it says, these regard burial embalmed and prepared bodies for burial, state law, shell control, all aspects of.
And Todd, you can't write that up so that she has it?
I can write it up.
It has a suggestion.
Yeah.
That way she's got the verbiage correct.
Yeah. So I can do that.
There were also concerns about it saying family cemetery by blood, marriage, or adoption. There are a number of situations, like, that it may be a, any sort of relationship that is a long-term relationship, or they would want to be at per, at burial point. So when I looked it up online, it was more of a private versus public, where private would allow for different types of relationships.
And I can, I can see that. I, I have no problem with that.
So the problem I see with that is that if Todd puts a burial plot in a cemetery in the backyard of his place, and he's known his neighbor for sixty-eight years, and his neighbor says, Todd, I really want to be buried on your property.
Okay.
And then you've got twenty-eight other people who say, Todd, I've known you for fifty years, I really want to be buried on, how do we prevent that?
What, what preventing would you need?
Why wouldn't, you wouldn't want, well, we're not setting up a burial for hundreds of people.
Right.
You would, that's why a, a private cemetery on your property should be for family, for blood relatives only.
But I think that you have to stop and think about relationships nowadays to the point that there, I know, I know several couples who have been together for, you know, thirty years, forty years, who are not married, who are not, they'd be considered common law, but they are not married.
I can't help that.
So you're, you're. So, you're, you're going to separate two people who have been, well, same.
I'm not doing anything. I'm creating a regulation that prevents us, if, if people want to bury their family or loved one, their blood relative, on their property. What I don't wanna create is thirty-eight more public cemeteries. And that's, what I'm hearing you say is, it would be a public cemetery.
No, no, that's not what I'm saying.
How do you prevent?
What's the limiting principle?
Yeah, that's, that's. What's the limiting?
What I'm saying is, if we say blood, marriage, or adoption.
Okay.
Two people who have lived together as, as husband and wife.
Can't help that.
And that's where, that's where it's wrong.
I can't help that. That's a true statement.
That's where it's wrong. Again.
How is it wrong? I didn't choose to, to, to live together for their entire life. They had an option to get married.
Sure.
How about, how about a legal decision here? If someone's been married, living together for thirty years, uh, same-sex marriage, would come in the same scenario? Okay, common law says they're married.
Well, let's, let's be clear about that.
That's exactly right.
You can't be, you can't be common law married against your, with.
That's exactly.
So, you know, there, there are, and I mean, we have recognized that there are people who are not married, who live together, who are specifically not married, right? They're not common law married, they're not regularly married, they're no way married. You guys, they.
They want to be.
See, the more we go down this path, the more, I'd rather put this in file thirteen and be done with it. I don't, use a public, public cemetery and just be done with it. Because I don't wanna create, it's hard and bad enough that we have a lot of these small cemeteries around the county, the cattle are walking over, nobody knows where they are, nobody's maintaining them, and, and if we go down that path, we're gonna have tons of them. And, and, and I understand what you're saying, Mark, but that's not why you create a family cemetery. You have to, you have to have some sort of regulation, otherwise, everybody's family, right?
No.
Sure they are. You're saying long-term relationship, let's, let's.
Well, what you're bringing up is neighbors coming to Todd and saying, hey, I wanna be buried on your property.
But it's a long-term relationship.
No, no, that, that is, that is a long-term friendship, that is not a long-term relationship. There's a big difference there. You're, yeah, I mean, we're, we're coming at this from two different ways. I'm trying to look at it all encompassing of all relationships within a family unit.
You can't do that. You can't do that. All relationships, all encompassing.
So, okay.
What's the limiting?
Yeah, for some fact of, how do you articulate the line? Give us the, the line. And I, I can't figure that one. I can't tell that.
You don't wanna have to prove.
Then, but just, so, friendships don't count, it's gotta be a relationship. What I'm saying is, is, you're, you're just all, we're, we're looking just in two different ways, I think we're saying the same thing, but looking at it in two different ways. I don't want to restrict families from being buried in a cemetery.
So, is.
So, private, family, whatever, I mean, as a.
Then why does anybody get married now, marriage laws? Is it defined?
It's not, it's not why, that, that is not.
Peace that helps us as a country define who is married legally so that we can do legal process?
No, no, I don't even wanna go down that path.
Well, that's the path you're headed, but that's the path you're headed.
Okay, here's, here's another scenario for you, if you're going down that path, okay? Tommy marries Beth, right? And Beth had a son before they were married. Tommy doesn't, Beth, uh, doesn't, uh, uh, adopt Jimmy, Beth dies, he raises him, never adopting him, is that family according to you?
He could be buried on that property because his wife was there.
No.
His mom.
Or his mom.
She chose to be buried somewhere else, so, see what I'm saying? So, he's raised this child.
So, why do this, so why do this at all? I don't think we should do this at all.
I mean, I think, I think what we're trying is trying to regulate family units.
You have to have a stopping factor and a defining, you have to build a defining somehow, otherwise, it's just a public cemetery.
Then take out the private and let family back in here.
You can't define, there's no definitive way to define family. I have a young man that I, 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 I know very well, and I consider him family, but he would not be buried on my property if I had a property.
Sure.
He's not my son.
Right.
By considering family.
But if I raise, if I raise a child, a son or a daughter.
Adopt them, do it legally. See, that's, that's the whole thing, we're going down.
That's what we're trying to regulate.
Well, you can't regulate it unless you have a, a stopping point.
Yeah, you gotta have a line somewhere, I mean, I'm, I'm agreeing with both sides in this.
In today's society.
Pretty hard, it's in terms.
In today's society.
I'm gonna use your, your, I'm gonna interrupt you.
No, you're fine.
In today's society, fifty years from now, then we have to redefine it because today's society fifty years later is different?
Well, are we gonna, are we going to?
We have a system in place where you legally adopt, you legally get married, those are defining things.
Or you're born.
Or you're born.
But those, what is happening now today is not gonna be the same as what's happening fifty years from now. What's happening today is not the same as it was fifty years or a hundred years ago.
Too gray for me.
Well, yeah, the only, the only regulation we have. I, I don't, I don't agree with that, but, but, it's, it's a self, your, your only regulatory principle then is the self-interest of the owner of the property to limit, right? Trusting the owner to say, here's my line, no far, right? So, so your neighbor comes over, you say, well, I, you know, we've known each other for a long time, so I feel like to say, you're not gonna get buried, you know, make your own line, whatever. And is, is that enough? I don't know.
I believe it is.
But a regulatory, has a regulatory matter, he sits there, he has to mark off a checkbox. What's the checkbox?
There isn't.
Right?
It's a judgment call for every future, uh, well, is that any planning reg, director? I don't think so.
Can I throw something simple out there?
I'd love to.
So, the limiting factor would be size, right? Limiting factor would be private, how do you define private versus public? Public, they're talking about lot fees. So, private, you should not be allowed to charge a fee.
Okay.
That would make it private. So, limiting factor would be the size of it.
So, you don't wanna use it up by your neighbors because your future.
Family, your, your relations.
So, you put in there that it cannot, uh, house, hold, be buried more than five people? Five bodies? Ten bodies?
Do you think five is a reasonable number?
I don't know, that's what makes, that's what makes.
When, when you're looking at quarter acre, how many lots could you fit in that quarter acre, right?
Are they stacked? Are they put them side by side?
So.
Yeah, that's a case, yeah.
A lot of places stack.
My question is, so, what, what does the county, the county government care about how many are stacked on top of each other, as long as they're six feet below ground?
Yeah, it just gets to be.
It's the, what is occurring, there, there was a comment about.
Well, there's always the danger that somewhere in, in, you know, years from now, that you are actually, you know, government, I mean, who's put in charge of the area and has to do something about it.
Correct.
Because it's a, you know, it's a burial site.
Correct.
You know, so.
We already get hit up for that now, there are private sites that want us to take them over or maintain them, donate money.
Because there were never requirements of those.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And we're still, yeah, and we're, we're ending them, but you're still talking about, you know, if you got five of them, that's, that's up pretty quick.
It is not, it is not our, in my opinion, it is not this body's, whoever's sitting here, responsibility to determine family or private. It's not. They've got a quarter acre to work with. If, if they fill it up, you know, I mean, if they're, if they're, you know, what are they, four foot by, they need three foot in between, however, however they could get them all in there, whatever they need to do.
I'm gonna take a, a rare moment, we had a comment.
She, she spoke to it, the quarter, I, I thought that the, the quarter acre seems to eliminate it pretty significantly, that was, that was basically my point.
You've been put a lot of plots in a quarter acre, you know.
Me?
Yeah.
And you're not charging for them, so, and you can't mention it to the public.
And so, again, I ask, what happens thirty years from now when there's nobody living on that property, and they're running cattle on it, and they come to the gu, county government?
The same, the same, no, no, the same exact thing is supposed to happen right now by state statute, from the way I understand it.
What's the state statute?
The owner of the property is supposed to maintain the cemetery in an orderly fashion, but they don't, and that is a state statute, not ours. So, if, if the state does not step in and go to the property owner, and, you know, I've complained about this one ever since I've been on here, when this first got brought up, that if the state does not step in and do something, it's not our responsibility to do.
It's in your title, and I understand.
It's in your title, you're in us.
Option when that happened.
Yes.
It is stated that this goes with the property owner.
And if the property, or new property owner's.
We're gonna call it family burial plot, and no defined, there's no defining family.
We, we'd call it a private, I don't care.
You could also put a number on it, I mean, you could put a number of areas. And, you know, you said quarter acre and limited to pets.
Well, okay, if we do that, then we're going to have to go talk to cemetery board and find out what a cemetery plot consists of, how big it is, so on and so forth. So, I think, I, I don't, I don't see that.
Way lower than what you're the max.
I don't, I don't see that we need to do that, honestly.
I agree. I don't, I, yeah, because.
Well, but it's a compromise between the two poles, meaning that you're, you're increasing that inherent need of the person who's making this a private burial site, not to, to monetize it, instead of, you know, see, if he says, I've only got twenty plots on this quarter acre, then I'm not gonna, you know, the price of that goes up for me, especially, I want fifteen for me and my family.
I, I, no, 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 what, what are you talking about monetizing?
Well, not monetizing, I'm saying, you do have, I'm trying to get to a quarter, I mean, not monetary, but value.
Right.
Because every, if you've got twenty plots, every plot is cost, right? So, if you sit there and say, you know, I've got five kids, and they've got six, you know, I've got six grandkids so far, but how many, you know, so you start caps it up, and you say, I, I really can't let, you know, I can't get this, I can't do this for my neighbor because I gotta have this, I want this to be a family plot.
And, and I, okay, I fully understand what you're saying.
That way, you're, you're.
But there again, if we're gonna do, if we're gonna do that, if we're going to limit it, uh, which the quarter acre well limited, but in order to do that, like I said, you're gonna have to go to the cemetery board and say, how big, how wide, how much space in between do you calculate for your cemetery? Because there are limitations also.
I mean, the only, I'm saying you put a number on, you know, is lower than what could be for on top of me.
What's the number?
Well, I, I bet you it's less than twenty.
Well, okay, that's what I'm saying, in order, in order to do this fairly, and in order to do it in a way that is going to appease people, and you can actually back yourself up with facts, you're going to have to, have to have some information in order to be able to, to come up with a number.
There's a certain legislative problem here, I think I'm trying, what I'm saying is, is that, the, the, there is a issue here between two polarities, if you, you know, it's a private cemetery, whoever I want to be buried there, I can have them buried, versus, this is supposed to be for families only, and I'm saying, the, you can't, there's no way to get, you're either one or the other, and in-between is hard to find. The way you find the in-between in that is, you regulate it so that the number there is so attenuated or low, that sure a bit within there, but people don't have the incentive to kind of say, I'm gonna open it up to, I'm, I've got a restricted number here, so by God, if I want my fifteen family members who are not dead yet to be with me, then I'm not gonna, you know, I'm not gonna let, you know, I'm not gonna give it away for, for easy.
And, and I, I could agree, I could agree with you on limiting it, but there again, I deal in facts, and I have to know, if I got a quarter acre plot, how many people can I put in there?
Why do you have to know that? Why can't you limit it to ten? Based on what this board?
Then why make it a quarter acre, just say, you can plant ten people in a plot?
Because you're limiting the size of the, the.
You're limiting it for ten people.
Let, let me throw this out.
Is that, is that not true?
Um, so, if a family wants to have a mausoleum or cremations done, and, I mean, the number could be.
Bigger.
Significant to cover many generations, right? So, if you limit it to the number, then.
Our creations, uh, monitor.
Will you monitor?
Well, you, you have someone dreaming, you get the urn back, and grandma's down in the Gulf of Mexico, or in the land of.
Or the.
The city, Mayana Cemetery has a thing called the columbarium, it's like a locker kind of thing, I know the thing about my space, but there's a lot of, a lot that could be buried.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It could be buried, yeah.
Or spread.
Yeah, and, and there's, there's really no limitations on that. So, currently, at this time, we have no regulation on private cemeteries. And this all started because we had somebody who asked to have one. And we have their name, and they have their, they have applied.
Their special use.
So.
Actually, that I'm aware of, too.
Well, ask competitors.
So, I, I still think we're kind of back to one thing, which I, the discussions we did, get some thoughts out of it, I think that, uh, the planning commission's gotta be the, at least, yeah, I think we can guide them in the sense that, I don't think the state law, I think the concept we talked about telling them is fine, and we can tell them thoughts on this, but at this point, they're, they're gonna have to have another, like, a meeting session, I guess, or a discussion session, before they, they're gonna notice it up, and fortunately, probably gonna say, I don't know if it's like the, you know, Pennsylvania where you sit there and say, until you guys get to a version that internally the planning commission is having, and notices that up a public comment, and probably shouldn't be, they're gonna have the same problem, coming in, fighting for this thing, so, I don't have an answer to that except for.
But I'm thinking your assistance in that.
But, yeah, I can give them that, you know, a revision that meets, that more fulsomely explains what the plot was. If they take it or leave it. Then, the, the only, only recommendation I would say, instead of family, just call it private, unfind private, private doesn't indicate that you have to be family. Well, you know, like I said, probably get to a point where this will come back, and then the rubber can't run, your guys just need to, so the, so they can't swallow.
And the quarter acre's gonna limit it, uh, at some point?
Yeah, and so, yeah, if you wanna make that rec, recommendation back to them and write him, that would be great.
Okay. Any other comments on this before we move on?
Okay. Keep the conversation. Dave, what else?
The January meeting will be full of a lot of just the annual review of things. It's not a public hearing, as far as publishing it, we do have a, a zoning change in January, which is a public hearing. But then at the end of that, did you, did I give you?
Give you some minutes here.
Am I showing you what's?
Yeah, that's, the first one is, that's, uh, individual request, and that's got quasi-individual information, so that's relevant. Yeah, and I think that's fine.
So, like, going over the budget and the review of the confidence of all of that stuff is just normal?
Yeah, that's fine, and I think that's a good news, that.
That was, that's a good one. That was, that's a good one. I hope you, that's all I have.
You want to be told where I hear?
The, uh.
Oh yeah, I got that. Yeah, I had to cancel that.
I have a question for you on, on the hazard mitigation plan. Does that have anything to do with the email that we got from the NRCS? For the Elk Creek?
No.
Do you know, do you see that? I, I was curious what that was and if that had, I'm not sure what we're doing with that.
So I think that's probably an proposed, um, watershed. Like they're gonna be putting in, uh, we're starting a dam. So we get letters on those.
Okay.
Um, I have reached out to, I don't recall his name.
Jamie Johnson from the NRCS out here? I, I was trying to figure out why it came from the state in, in NRCS instead of coming from the local even lets know what's going on.
Well, that, that and what would be required of me in that, in that project.
Yeah, I mean, I, yeah, if you could look into that, I'm, I read through this and looked at it and I don't really see where we're doing anything.
Yeah, my question has been forwarded on to him.
Okay.
So I know what it means.
I have an email?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm assuming it is?
Um, Elk Creek goes through a person's property and they're, uh, wanting to build a dam across there and.
Dam of a creek?
It looked like it.
That's what, that's kind of what it's indicating, but I don't know that they could actually do that.
Yeah, I don't know. I don't think so.
We live blood and.
It looked like it was a dam. I mean, there wasn't.
That's, now that's what, that's the way I was reading it. So, uh, that's why.
Or it was a, they wanna put a tube in or something and have a crossing. I, I wasn't quite clear.
Well, if they're, if they're burying some kind of line or something that pulls it up, it's not really a dam, but, you know.
And that's, that's why, that's why I really wanted to, you know, did you guys read that email?
I have not.
Okay.
Did the commissioner?
Yes.
It almost looks like maybe a watershed or.
If you want us to, it says, uh.
And US, and the, and the NRCS is gonna allow it?
The NRCS is doing an environmental study right now, so on and so forth. But like I say, it came out of the state not.
Yeah, that's a different, that's a different thing. The NRCS is not the same, but I would say it was a dam, the state can't, it's a different, so we're regulating that.
Well, it's the state NRCS office out of, uh, Salina. It's who sent this email. But we have our local NRCS office.
That's the soil, the soil conservation, right? That's not, I mean, the guy's regulating actual dams.
National Resource Conservation Service.
Would it be through the watershed district? So it's Delaware, or Elk is attributable to the Delaware.
Elk Creek Watershed GSD four and GSD twelve supplemental environmental assessment is what they're asking and they're, they were wanting, from what I read, they were wanting our support for. And, and like I say, formal request for cooperation, to be a cooperating agency on the Elk Creek Watershed Grade Stabilization Dam, GSD four and GSD twelve supplemental environmental assessment. And they want us to be a cooperating agent. Well, I can't be a cooperating agent if I don't know what the heck's going on.
Where's it, you know, where's it?
It's under commissioners?
No, I mean, uh, I just figured the internet was down earlier. It's still down, still down. Um, where's it proposed? What locale in Jackson County?
We're just getting, uh, on this, um, hang on just a second. Go back to it. All we're getting is Latin people on the view. The proposed location for GSD four is at Latin two thirty-nine blah blah.
It's probably up this way because it's narrow.
It's, it's in Niwauk, yeah.
Oh.
There's one in Niwauk County and then there's one that's actually in Jackson.
In Jackson, uh, for GSD twelve in Jackson. Close in last from project area. Yeah, well, like I say, I don't really.
I, I printed off the map, so I just didn't print that down.
I've got it right here, but I just, I don't, I don't know where for sure that it is.
Well, I've got it, yeah.
But yeah, so like I say, I'm, I'm just curious if you've got some information I'd like to know.
Yeah.
Okay. Anytime you get that, because I, I can't be cooperating, I don't know what I'm cooperating with.
Right.
Yeah, alright.
I would think.
So I, I didn't know if that's what this was about or not.
I would think if they would send somebody in, give us more of an explanation of what.
Local person, yeah. And I was trying to see if I could find out, you know, get a phone number for him. It's all, all I got is Jamie Johnson. I don't.
There's a phone number at the end of it.
That's for the Salina.
Yeah, have that, that's who I would reach out to if they.
Well, I would think our local office would be able to give us a little more information, wouldn't they?
You can call Jamie.
That's on me, yeah.
If we got the email from them, I guess that's who I would serve with. Maybe they're not the email.
It's already got that way because it's narrower. You go east, that thing's deep, wide, because we have land on the Elk as well. So it's wide.
Well, like I say, I just, I didn't know if this, uh, flood land was part of that or not, so that's why I brought that out.
Well, I mean. Yes, but it doesn't affect the medication.
Yeah.
It's just a project.
Right.
There you go.
No, you said you're relative, huh?
Yes, yeah, I'll, I'll actually, yeah.
Um. I don't know if there's a time threshold on that or not. They are finishing at the flyover.
Wait, are they, they're, they're doing that right now?
Yeah, they're gonna touch on stop. So they've done it.
Yeah, I can, I can do.
Okay.
So, uh, I wanna put bow on this today.
With Jamie?
No.
It's stressful, man.
And I, I have a question about that. So this will get sent off in the planning commission's packets that I send to them. Um, and then they will talk in the January ninth meeting after all of the reviews and the zoning change and all the stuff that they have to do on how, how they're planning on.
That's up to them.
Approaching that.
Approaching it, right?
That's up to them.
Okay.
Okay, you guys, I've, I've got a couple of it. We're doing?
I've got a couple extras.
Well, I mean, to the body of version five, I mean, I think I explained that that's basically, everything's changed up. The only thing that's highlighted in this has been, you know, changed in prior versions. So if it was a prior change, I, I'd probably erase it off there, so, um, anything to see there, some that's been added in version two, three, or four. Um. There, there's two, on page two, there's two new kind of, uh, concerns. Safety commissioning and disposal of project elements, which you guys brought up a month ago, so. Um, page seven has changed the, um, distance to one mile, considering that's.
Since page seven?
Page seven.
Yep.
Three or eight.
Yep.
Um. And, uh, I kind of fleshed out page fifteen of the meeting.
Yep.
And I think it's pretty subtle, so I just, for, for help. Uh, sixteen. Seventy. Can't remember where that change was, but somebody had. I think it was visible on the surface of property, but I haven't seen it, so I think that's probably, uh, if you just go by the cover record, then, you know. I don't wanna put out anybody who goes on property, so I would, that.
It's fair.
Right. Then they can say, well, it doesn't matter if it's on the record.
Right.
It doesn't. Um, paragraph eighteen and nineteen, I just highlighted, that was already there. There's something, uh, brought up, we were certainly getting about coverage of roads and stuff like that, so I just wanted to re- emphasize that so you could see. There were kind of covered those areas. Um, page twenty-three is changing, I think we talked about airport stress trips.
Yeah.
Um. I think, yeah, twenty-four and twenty-five are the letters of credit or ask for fund. That actually was already kind of in there, which has changed further in the discussion. So this is kind of a final, final for everyone of that, probably. Twenty, page twenty-seven, three has, like, basically just put a number on this positive, which you guys said you can. It doesn't finalize the number, it's just that's the positive. I think the only other thing was on thirty, I outlined which sections the limited systems have to comply with. So.
Um, I've got a question real quick, but I'm back on twenty-four. Um, explain to me the legal ramifications or the legal, I don't wanna put this. Their duty for legality on legal, on a letter of credit.
A letter of recommendation?
Letter of credit.
Oh, the letter of credit. Well, I mean, I, I think. I can't, on the fact that, you know, whenever you're talking about a letter of credit situation, there's a bank that's backing it, which is a highly regulated entity in and of itself. So, you know, if there are some issues with letter of credit, I mean, the idea is supposed to be counted in the fact that that is an undertaking you can invoke at any time. Um, and, and the reasons, there really is, you know, escrow account really isn't regulated by any particular other than the contracts between the parties. It's basically if there's an error in the contract or a problem in the escrow, then you're going to court to enforce it, if you guys can't work it out. If it's a letter of credit, and the letter of credit itself is the instrument and it is an undertaking that they have to do according to the draft of federal and state laws, the banking. So there really isn't the need, to my mind, to be too specific about how that works. I mean, as far as going further than saying, here's a letter of credit, could be a matter, who holds the escrow?
I think.
Well, I think it, there's escrow companies, correct. And I think that's how I would imagine it.
There's a, there's an escrow company who holds it just like on mortgage.
Yeah.
And therefore it's there.
It's, it's in a third, basically a third party.
Right.
And, and with a letter of credit, what you're saying is a letter of credit means that the banking institution is guaranteeing that at any given time, if we need that money, it is available. The only way they could get around that is if they send a letter saying, we no longer are.
Honoring that letter of credit.
Honoring it, that, that changes things and it would immediately go to an escrow. Or they can, they can substitute a letter of credit, but if they're not compliant, then you would shut them down. You have to shut them down.
Shut them down. Okay. But on an escrow scenario, the county needs so much money to, uh, take care of the roads, if it's set up like that. Why can't the county be the one that goes in there and acquires that money versus another entity such as the renewable company, renewable energy company? They should have no access to that.
Two different things. What we're asking for is money to maintain the roads.
Right.
And we're asking for.
A letter of credit.
No, escrow or a letter of credit in case of decommissioning.
Yeah, there's gonna be, I, I think there's.
Doesn't have anything to do with maintenance.
So there's, there's, there's probably still the question of whether or not there's a pilot in. Right.
But that's replacement. There's the enforcement amounts which are administrative costs. This is basically a decommission fund.
Okay.
So if there's no, there's nothing to take out until it's assigned.
Because I was thinking of the four buckets of state, you know, decommissioning, pilot, road, resiliency.
But the road resiliency, I think, is pilot. To my mind, there, under this regulation, there are only two buckets that you're open, you got. I mean, you're gonna have somebody who you're paying to inspect and some modicum for time to manage that process. That's an administrative cost, it's a charge. There is this, which is the decommissioning fund, which is the non-money to take, fix the place up, get a dam in. And then the other part, which is not in here at all, is what you get for money for whatever you need to keep things repaired. Overall, you know, manage the project as far as what are the impacts, was the impact on the impact for life of that term? That's not in here, but that's separate.
What is to, I, I'm not sure I like the letter of credit. I really don't. Uh, I'm, what is to regulate what banking facility we get from? I mean, is it, do we have to accept the letter of credit before they start this? Uh, because if they write it from the First National Bank of the Bahamas.
Okay.
Right?
Yeah.
Uh, and after they get started and they're almost done, oh, the First National Bank of the Bahamas says, well, guess what, I wrote a whole letter of credit for the decommissioning and you're just out.
Not, you wouldn't be out. From that point on, if they don't replace it with a letter of credit from another bank.
Uh-huh.
All works and all and or energy production stops at that point.
Right. But what we're looking at is the decommissioning portion of it.
Okay, I'm not following.
So as if they hold a letter of credit for the decommissioning.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can shut it down and what do we do? We're sitting there holding the bag for the field.
Yeah.
At what point though?
After they get it completed.
Once it's completed.
If there's losing electricity, it has to stop.
Right. Then it just sits there.
It's not decommissioned.
Where's the money to decommission it? Where's the money to get it out of it?
They're, they're still responsible for that.
As if, if it's a revenue, well, they can't, the bank can't withdraw it.
Correct.
They can replace it with another revenue.
If the First National Bank of the Bahamas says that we're done, we're not doing this, then.
That's a problem because, yeah, that ultimately.
That, that's what I'm saying for.
But you could also go again and says, well, you know, title company that holds the escrow suddenly has a, you know, scandal, the, the, they, they're liable, they're closing their doors.
And I personally would assume trust the, one of the title companies or one of the escrow companies. I, I, you see where I'm, where I'm going with this. If they get it done and then they say that, whether they're a good bank or whatever and they hold a letter of credit. Then we've got the field done, granted, they can't do anything with it. They can't transmit, right? Because we've got that in here, it's gotta be, then they're, they violated, so they can't transmit, so then we're sitting there holding the bag for the whole field. With nothing for decommissioning, for cleaning up, for getting rid of? Is that, am I not thinking that way?
Well, I think, I think what you're saying is, is that there's always a failure point on any guarantee of this kind of nature. Meaning, short of us having the CD and Tennessee State Bank.
Yeah.
Well, so I would, I would feel.
Whatever you can imagine, there's a state bank going, I would consider.
Why would, why would an accounting hold if an escrow in a fund? You know, they turn that money over to you and then the county picks it up, you know, fund by itself.
That is what, that is what I wanted all along for an escrow account.
That's a, call it an escrow.
That is, the county's holding that money.
I don't know that we can do that. I, that's why I'm leaving. Oh, I, because Mark, I don't know the laws. I don't know if we can require, I don't know legally if we can require that.
That is what I've been asking for all along. I want the money in an escrow account. I want X amount of dollars in the esc, in the escrow.
Well, escrow.
Right, you know, right off the bat, as soon as they start offering.
That's what's stated in here, but what Linda's saying is, is an escrow account held by the county, which is a third party.
Yes, yeah.
It's not by definition an escrow.
We're not drawing out of it unless it is abandoned and decommissioned.
This is strictly more the decom- This is strictly more the decommissioning part.
I see that, yeah, I agree with that. And what you're saying, five years down the road, they decide we're done, we don't have a letter of credit for it, we're walking away from it, it's gone to the county. I understand what you're saying, and that scenario.
And that's, like, say, if we're, if we're talking about the technical county, county people, and everything in the county, I don't see that a letter of credit is gonna do that, I really don't.
Well, I mean, I, again, I would say that if you can get a letter of credit of any reputable size bank, you can count on it, but, but you're right in the sense that if you're, I mean, I have looked at what the issues would be if you guys held the fund, because you're, you're not legally a pository of that nature. Trying to figure out why that, why that's caused some heartburn, other than the fact that twenty years from now, that fund is sitting there, and it's got two million dollars. And it's, they, they decommission, they're decommissioning like nobody's business, and it's pristine. Now, are you sure that the three guys, or three gals, or whoever is sitting there are gonna just say, okay, well, they didn't write by us, let's go ahead and turn that money back over to you, and you guys write a check for that amount of money, and the public doesn't get it, it's armed. It wouldn't, you know, you guys had the concept that it was not counted money, it's not our money, it's a hospital, it's an escrow. Well, what if that, if those groundswell people come in here and say, why do they get that back?
I'm not following, I'm not seeing where, where it says in there anywhere that they're gonna get anything back.
Well, then, that's a good point. They're not gonna get, well, that's the idea, is that the escrow would have an agreement that if they, I mean, that's the parent, right? That says, you want to, you want to close this out and move everything, clean it up right, because then you'll get your, like, your land back.
Right.
And blanky-blank is enough to do it all. To our specifications and our desires, so they're, they're better off.
But the blanky-blank, whatever's left is still going to be held in escrow for any unforeseen circumstances that come up out there.
Yeah, and.
For X number of years.
Been reasoned, but if they have, I'm talking about, if they have reclaimed the property to its original condition, and you have a reasonable, you know, all reasonable assumptions are made, and you're sitting there looking at it, it looks good, at that point, you've got, still got a million dollars sitting there.
You're just gonna keep it?
Well, yeah.
I'm gonna hold on to it for X amount of years until I make sure that there are nothing washes, nothing.
That's not in there.
That's what I'm saying, that's what.
But we've never talked about that.
Yeah, I thought that, that's what.
All we've talked about, all we've talked about is a, is a fund where money is put aside for decommissioning. And they decommission it on their own, it'd be into thirty years, and it's decommissioned, and our engineer, engineering firm that we hire says, yep, it's been put back based on photographs, based on the land, and the landowners are all happy, why do we have the right to hold any of that?
Not forever, but I wanna hold some back for X amount of years, because that is, that is how we guarantee that, you know, if they go in, they replace their, replace this, or replace that, and two years down the line starts washing, what do we do then?
Yes, then we're gonna have to put that in there.
Well, I, I thought that's what we had talked about all along, is doing it.
Or if there's rats, five years down the road, three years down the road, whatever.
What?
Radiation, rats.
There's not gonna be radiation on this, there's no radiation with this.
Chemicals?
No, no.
What about chemicals that?
There's no, there's no chemicals on this, it's gonna need to be ground.
Okay.
No.
I'm just asking.
Yep, no.
Okay.
So, I think the decommissioning, yeah, if you go back and look at other regulations and repeat this to death.
Yeah.
I understand.
They don't go into that depth. It, I mean, I can't imagine how big this would be if you had to spell out every, for instance, or whatever.
I think that, I think on some of these, we need to spell out that, and I thought that's what we had talked about all along, that.
I don't remember if we were having a conversation about, if it's decommissioned, and it meets the standards that, that we were trying to decommissioning, that we would still hang on to their money for one year, two years, three years, five years.
Should there be, should there be any remaining balances after completion of decommissioning or reclamation, the county shall have to write the full payment of any remaining funds until all obligations of the owner-operator have been satisfied. Okay, so, we're looking at it like, okay, this is gonna be fine and dandy, and then they walk away after everything's done, but on certain instances, you know, there are, there are sites that you keep monitoring for a certain amount of time afterwards, right? Before you finish up.
What would that be?
The site. What would that be?
Yeah.
Three Mile Island, probably Oklahoma River.
Okay.
That's what I'm saying, we've, we've gotta, we've gotta cover our butts that way, too. For a long term, not just the short term, they're done, there they go, and walk away.
What I'm saying is, what would that be, specific to this project, what would that be?
Time, timeline?
Timeline, what are we looking for, what are we asking an engineering firm to check on?
I mean, I, I think you have an accurate concept with there is, if there's going to be, you know, surface, you know, kind of resurfacing, meaning the topsoil is stored, and, and it's gonna be graded and stuff like that, and you can see where maybe there's, you know, drainage problems, or, or lost soil, or whatever, but, and that's, I'm talking about.
And honestly, that's what, that's what you're looking at for that, is drainage problems, topsoil loss, because it didn't go back, you know, you're not gonna get it a hundred percent back the way it was, right? But if there comes up to be a problem to where something's washing big time, then you're gonna have to go back in and redo that.
And you don't think this is up to the landowner to determine?
No.
Well, I think, well, I think it's, I don't know that we have any, any right, you can leave that open a little bit, sorry, there was just noise out the hallway, thanks. I mean, I don't know that we have the authority to tell the landowner, hey, there's a ditch washing out there, that needs to be fixed.
Oh, no, not the landowner, but the company who removed the topsoil to begin with.
But who says they're removing topsoil?
They'll have to graze conserved areas to be able to get it to graze.
And, and what I'm getting at is, you're, you're, you're trying to figure out every possible scenario before it ever happens. And I don't know that you could ever have a regulation big enough.
I, I agree, you're not gonna be able to write regulations big enough to do that, because we're not the federal government that can do that. But we try to take into account certain situations, to where we can say, we're gonna hold the remaining decommissioning fund in escrow for five years until we feed, until we, the engineering firm that we hired, has looked at it and found that, okay, the land's stable, everything's good, there's no washing.
So, what is that number? How many years?
What, what number?
How many, how many years?
Well, you know, you can, you can look at it at five years and say, let's go with five years. And if they get it at five years, we're gonna be able to see, unless you have a ground situation.
That needs to be put in, is what I'm saying. It needs to be, so we need two numbers. We need to know what the number of years is that you want, and, and how many dollars.
Hold the whatever's left in the.
You can't find, there's no final withdrawal until that five years is up, or?
Well, like you say.
Could, could, could you say that the county's engineering firm will make a determination of profitable cost of any further activity, and then release the, everything but that to the, to the company? And basically, they say, well, worst case scenario, this is gonna cost you another million dollars to fix, and ten million dollars to fund, you can release it.
Yeah, I, I have a picture of the pre-states out in Oskaloosa. And there will be some grass that's, that will have to be replaced, but it's on a hill.
Sure.
And underneath the panels itself is bare. So, they'll have to go in and do that kind of stuff, but it doesn't appear on the one, now, I'm only assigning one, that there's any wash or anything, because there is vegetation around it, so, but if one wants to see it, or something.
I'm fine with that, if we wanna insert that in there, let's put it in there.
Well, listen, I just think that we need to look long-term after this leaves, rather than just cut it off right then and say, we'll get it.
Okay, but that's never been discussed, it's always been, there will be a de-commissioning fee, and that will be put in, it will be revisited every three to five years, and adjusted for inflation.
Yes.
But no conversation on, well, we're gonna hold it for X number of years, we're gonna hold that.
I thought, I thought you talked that, we have, that's my, that's my mold.
Yeah, I think there's kind of a sensitivity here about how much, you know, but this is not, I mean, that's a service money intent, it's kind of a concept, but you're right about it, and there's a point at which the landowner's interest becomes more appropriate than ours.
Yeah, I'm not gonna sit up on a landowner's price and say, hey, that ditch has to be fixed, it's your property, if you want it fixed, we'll help you.
I'm, I'm not, I'm not saying that, I'm not saying that at all, because we're trying to protect the landowner's rights by doing this, in my opinion.
I guess, probably the question here then is, I, I can change that, is there any other things that struck you guys as just knee-jerk, we need to take them up?
When do you have, when do you have to send this out, for the January meeting?
Well, I can send it out whenever you guys have it.
Well, I wanna, I, like I said, I got a chance to review part of it over the weekend, I'd like to.
Well, let's, let's, let's talk about the next thing, did you?
Yeah.
I guess I just wanna get it out of the, you know, is it in or is it out of the plot process here, is I, what I, what I did was, when I sent this out, but, Next Era representatives from Posenelli, Lawfner, went through and draft, you know, it's important that they, they went through, I think, draft, too. So, they're way behind, I'm draft, but regardless. I, what I did was I picked, like I said, the, the big issues, and I'm not, I, if they had a technical edit that looked like it was good, I made it. Okay, is that, you know, and if there was additional word that didn't really change anything, but made it better, I took it. So, but these are things that are needy, and have half to them, and just question whether you guys wanna talk about it now, or defer all of this to planning commission, or what, and I go through it piece by piece, but probably the main one is actually in the last page, where, I mean, one of the main issues was setbacks numbers.
Give me a bench, huh?
Page seven. With this key setback issues. And what I did on that was, I mean, they basically made a general questioning of setbacks. So, what I did was, I took, we had that spreadsheet of county setbacks, and this is kind of a quick list of things that probably are, are ones that you're, how you guys fit in with it, with me, so, you know, because you, because if there's so many versions, you can't think about, well, did you, did you still have King County, not, you know, this, so, that's what this does, it says, okay, are we concerned about the large-scale project size, you guys have two thousand acre max, you know, biggest one, I think, is three thousand ton acres in Douglas County, technically, King County has little limits, and Joko has two thousand acres. So, are you, you know, this is to say, are you feeling self-conscious about that?
No.
Okay. This is from City Limits, um, there is no, there's none in Douglas and Johnson counties, but you guys have a mile or less than Butler has two miles, and Johnson has one point five miles. So, you're actually better than, than everybody except Douglas County. This is from other large-scale solar, you see with Butler and Johnson, but Douglas County has no distance. This is from panel to the road, I think it's probably one of your bigger ones, you got a hundred fifty feet, Johnson has fifty, some distances. This is a panel to residence, probably also larger, biggest one is Douglas County's five hundred, just out. And max panel, how are they, they're twenty. So, that's just, you know, there's no wrong or right, it's just when they say setbacks are humorous, that's what we're talking about, so this is mainly something that you guys look at.
Well, I'll, I'll chew those over, but it, it comes back to what I've kinda said all along, we're writing the regulations to protect county, protect county citizens, and if a business entity can fit their business model into our regulations, fine and dandy, if not, then, then go on down the road.
But you're assuming that zoning and planning won't change that.
I mean.
And so, I think.
Yeah.
They may change it, and they may send it back to us, and then we may change it, and have recognition, go back to them.
Yep. It, it, yeah, this is just, because that was said, that the setbacks were all, you know, X Y Z.
Correct, there has to be a starting place for everything, so.
Yeah, and it was just how, how you guys could put that in context of what you guys did with whatever they missed.
But I, at first, I don't feel this is a negotiation.
With.
I don't feel the regulations that we are writing is a negotiation with an engineering company that wants to come in.
Didn't say it was, it's a, it's a negotiation, though, with zoning and planning, they have every authority to change any of this.
Well, no, yeah.
And so, the whole process of, of this, when, when they get this.
Yep.
And the public gets to come in and say, for or against, and here's why I'm for or against, that's when they get that opportunity to make that change. I told people that are, that are for this, that you need to go to that meeting, and you need to voice your, your opinion, if, if two thousand acres isn't enough, show up to zoning and planning and make your case there. They're the ones that can change that.
Yes.
If you don't like a mile from any incorporated city, go to that meeting and, and ask for that to be changed. All those changes will come at those meetings, not here.
Yep.
We are just creating a, a document that is a starting place, that zoning and planning can now have the public meetings, they can hear from people, they can go over, they can add to, they can send it back to.
Yeah, well, that's, that is basically what I'm getting at, I don't, I don't think that this is, well, it's here. Like I said, I can care a lot what Next Era says, honestly. I mean, we need to, we need to get the starting point, and then everything needs to go over there, and Next Era wants to come in and talk about it, they can talk about it, planning commission, because that's not, that's not our basis.
And this is probably more for informational purposes, you know, I would think that, you know, one of these things would be that you could be warned about the fact that, you know, this isn't gonna work, or whatever, and then, right, I mean, because we're, you know, maybe they say, well, you don't understand X Y Z. I didn't see much of that, I mean, I, but I wanted to put these in front of you, so you guys could take a look and say, okay, before we send it, we obviously made a mistake. I don't think there's anything in here that's in that category, but you guys can decide. And one of the things I think is interesting, and maybe you just wanna, what I would say is, one made a mistake, and what we did was, they removed criminal offenses from the records. So, I think, I don't know what your feel is on that, but I think, would this commission consider a, a regulation that did not have an opportunity for proceeding with criminal offense? So, so, you know, you're kinda saying to the planning commission, let's send it back to.
Let me, let me throw it to you then.
Yeah.
Would you recommend to this commission that we not have regulation?
Nope.
That, that has criminal offense in it?
Nope.
Okay. Because that's what I'm leaning on you for, is, is, you know, the, the legal side of things, and if you wouldn't recommend it, I sure wouldn't recommend it.
Yeah, and I, I just, I, I think there's probably a place in some of these, that one at least, you can kinda say, well, we, we're keeping it in there, and there's a reason, there might be, there might be something that's not negotiable, the fact that we would get it back, or we'll get it to not.
So, Mark, Dan, are you comfortable with Kate sending this out this week?
I, I'd like to read your list, and I got about half a week here, and I'd like to finish it up and make comments Monday, or I can call or.
So, we're gonna push it back another week?
Yes.
That's fine, I did read that, you did.
Like I said, I got, I got through about half of it.
I like that.
Okay, I appreciate the fact that you got it to a subservency, but I was hoping that we could take action in the sense that we could allow this to go out. Do you believe there's gonna be, or a change?
If you wanna send it out, you can send it out, if I have any concerns, I'll, I'll give a precision, let you know, that, that's fine, you wanna send it out. give Kristi, she can let you know. That, that's fine. You wanna send it out, send it out.
Yeah. Well, the, I mean, the changes, the only thing I would say is, changes that, I mean, that strikes me as being substantive, that would change the escrow slash tail end that seems substantive, so.
But that, that's a matter of just changing that wording in that one paragraph, and then, go ahead and.
Well, that's, yeah, your decision about that, you're willing to let me write it, then send it, then blind, uh, oh, that's, that's a choice here, just look at it, Monday, next Monday, because this, this isn't a problem to do this week, and, and send it out then versus send it out right now.
I do have one thing, clarification on, I wanted to talk about this. I understand two-thirds of it, but the other third is something I want to question. It is airports and airstrips, number 13. Five miles of any military airfield or commercial airport, now the or is airstrip. Private airstrip, what, how do you identify that? If I put, if I decide to buy land across, say, the road from one of these, a farm, and I go, well, I'm gonna put an airstrip in there. How do you, how do you identify that?
I thought, I mean, I thought from what my notes had, was that we, we really only could talk about actual airports or official, I mean, not airst, not private.
Okay.
Or land airstrips.
Yeah, no problem.
Okay. Yeah, if it's clearly identified in there.
Well, that's, that, I, I guess, not to make sure this is the take-up, I just, I always thought the military area, the home airports, the home airstrips, and so I said, military has airfields, and commercial has airfields. They don't have, and then airstrips are probably private or.
That's.
You know, if you're not, it's not public, so, so that's why I'm, that's what I'm saying.
Okay.
Are you, and, and so you're asking.
If, if I, like, my uncle used to have an airstrip east of town here, on a hayfield. They called that an airstrip, because they landed their airplanes. I think it's.
Private or?
Private. It's private. Publicly owned.
Isn't that what's in the regulation?
It says airstrip.
It's a commercial airport or airstrip.
Airstrip. It says airstrip.
There's no private.
They're, they're supposed to get, go ahead.
Yeah, but that's just it. I think our, our private airstrips are irregular, so, sure they are, right?
Especially use permit.
Special use permit, yeah. But at the end of the day, you know, but you can.
These regulations, a private airstrip, says not meet this regulation.
Okay, that's what I'm asking.
Correct.
Yeah. I think if you got a commercial airport or a military airport, you know.
That would be the only thing that would restrict the distance. But a private airstrip, I mean, hiding up here, or landing in a pasture.
Okay.
And they get a special use permit to, to do so, that doesn't constitute commercial or military.
No.
Correct.
Because, I read that, and I wanna just clarify. That's, I have two-thirds of it, and the other third of it is, I identified that.
Yeah, I, I don't know if we wanna go into that mess, but.
Okay.
Me, to my mind, at a certain point, that is because there is, I mean, we're not, we're not paying no dividends.
Okay.
Okay. Well, it's up to you guys. I'll, I'll make the changes no matter what.
She wanna email those out individually, that would be fine.
Yeah. And do you wanna send it to the planning commission after that, or do you wanna have another?
No, I, go ahead and send it. Like I say, I'm, I'm, we've read through it all through the different revisions. I just want a chance to finish this up and go through it, go and send it out, whatever.
Well, I, I guess, I wanna, I wanna get the outlines of this change. Basically, it's gonna say something to the effect of, upon de-commissioning, amount will be held for a period of five years for purposes of review and checking, reclamation of property, and funds can be used without, about 10 out of five years if there's a real big problem in your, your business. You have no problem with partially releasing, if they comply with these funds, and access the necessary funding, or any other problem?
Okay.
Sounds good to me.
Okay. It is 11:27. Kate, do you have anything? Sean, congratulations.
Appreciate it.
Thank you for taking some time.
Thank you.
Yeah. Congratulations.
I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
You're younger, Steve.
All right.
Congratulations. Appreciate it.
Yeah.
So, yeah, Scott, just, do you wanna walk through what, whatever you got to share with us, if you've got questions of us, or?
Well, not really. I mean, I don't really have a set agenda.
Okay.
Really, it was just an opportunity to come in, introduce myself to, to the commission, make sure that I, my belief is to real strongly work closely with every county commissioner, so, there's three counties and a district, so I spent this morning up, and another one this morning already, so just trying to establish those conduits, communication, understand the importance of, or the priorities that the commission may have for, for our communities.
I appreciate that. I would say, I guess, if I can go first, one of the, one of the things that I would, there were several things, but unfunded mandates that the state puts on counties, the less of those that you can help get rid of would be great, because every time an unfunded mandate from the state comes in, we have to find the money somewhere. I'm not gonna mention a certain senator, but says that there are no unfunded mandates, but I would say, LAV, or not LAVTR, but the revenue neutral meetings will be unfunded, and it is a mandate by the state of Kansas that, that we have to pay postage and people and overtime to do these. So, any of the, and I think if you watch Kansas Association of Counties website, they're going to list, and I think right now they, there's 18 unfunded mandates, that they're going to lobby the state legislature to get rid of. So, if we get those, and we should be getting them here in the next few weeks, I will forward that on to you, so that you have an idea, because I don't know all of them. But that, that would be something, and then it's, Mark, you brought up something at the last KAC conference that I thought was a really good idea, because they're, because they're getting rid of LAVTR.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
They've already got rid of LAVTR, which you're familiar with, the local adware tax, that's just off the books now. So, your suggestion was?
What I, what I had put forward to add to the legislative agenda was to unfund all taxes that were specific to LAVTR, because when it started back in the 30s, there were taxes that they had specifically funded LAVTR with, and throughout the years, there were more taxes that were added to that to complete the funds, and I think liquor by the drink was one, if I remember right. cigarette tax, things like that. There were a portion of those, all that went to fund LAVTR. If we no longer have LAVTR, we no longer need to be funding.
Paying those taxes.
Paying those taxes to the state, because that's, that's honestly where all of the surplus is right now, the $3 billion surplus, or whatever it is, that's where, that's where that money came from, was those taxes, that they haven't paid to, to the counties in the last 30 or 22 years. So, that was one of the suggestions I had to, to pass, and so, that's gonna be one of the legislative, we're already here about it, one of the legislative agendas is to do that.
Do you know who Jay Hollis?
Who do you know?
Jay is attorney who works for Kansas Association of Counties. He advocates for county issues. Jay is very good at what he does. He's a plethora of information. He lobbies. I think it would be to your advantage to get to know Jay. Just for information, what affects counties and how it affects.
And also Mike Taylor.
Yeah, Mike Taylor, another, another great individual who, again, they're advocating for counties, may not always be what, what the state wants to do, but at least, I think, would be good information for giving history behind certain things and, 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 um, but.
Yep.
We've already talked about, keep it up in mind, with Northeast Kansas area engaging, they oversee and work with us on the Jackson County Senior Citizens Center. This is a model out here that we have here in, in Holton, very well-run, meals on wheels, things like that. They've not had great communication over the past several years with previous representatives. Also, Northeast Kansas community action program too. I would ask that you would, you know, visit with them to, you know, we frequently talk about this. They do a lot of great things here in the community. So, just from my standpoint, what I've worked with was for them.
And, and as you come across, I guess, it's like these unfunded mandates, as you come across and you read about them, and they're, if you're going, I wonder how this really does affect, I can't, don't hesitate to reach out to us, I mean, because it may seem like, well, this really doesn't affect the county in a particular way. Kristy is very knowledgeable about how some of these things affect us, so if you wanna know from our perspective how it affects us, we'd be glad to have that conversation with you, because it may be hard to understand some of these, or how does it really affect you, you know, or is there a different way to approach it? So, I appreciate the fact that you're wanting to open up some life and communication up now. It would be like drinking from a fire I grew up around.
Well, I mean, I, I don't have a background in politics. I mean, that's the reality of the movement.
That's good.
My involvement was spearheading and grinding for a change. I hope you were successful on this last year, and had exposure with my generation, so.
So, how do you, what do you see, or what is your thoughts on the state and how they, property taxes, how they affect property taxes? What do you hope to gain or do or in that question?
So, I'm not an expert in that topic specifically at all.
Okay.
So, I, I don't know where the state's involvement is at this point.
Okay.
I can tell you that that's one of the hot topics that I've been asked about. I guess you guys probably have a much more pulse on that topic than I do. Property taxes is not a very popular topic around our community, our county, and I can tell you, the same counties up north are having the same conversation. So, property tax is a, is a topic that I know is, is gonna get a lot of attention. I don't pretend to be knowledgeable and love to hold a, a session on one way or the other.
You wouldn't.
Well, what, what's your email address?
Um, so I'm actually getting my formal one tomorrow, so I can email you that. The one I've been using right now for any political aspects is sean.wilcott@gmail.com.
And if you would, just your official one, if you wanna get that to Kristy?
Yeah.
It shows the person.
Yeah. So, I'll send you email address, my office number, and my cell phone number.
Do you have your signees?
I have three committees that I've been assigned to. I have been assigned to the Commerce, Labor, and Economic Development Committee.
Okay.
Federal and State Affairs Committee, and Social Services Committee.
And Social Services probably is going to kneecap as well, because they have Kansas, or they have state money and federal money, so they'll probably be a good committee for you, make a nice bridge. There's also some things going on in the community. I'm sure you're aware, or well, well aware of the request from the county to our state senators and congressmen about recovering money of lost revenue, of lost USA property, so that's something I, I would encourage you to work with the commission going forward on that.
So, we, we also just sent an email out to Francis, our camp, about increasing a 4% sales tax, and that would be solely for the hospital. So, it, it is not a popular thing with the community, but we're willing to do it for the hospital on their behalf, and then allow the public to vote on it next fall. So, if you wanna, you know, I'm not sure, 100% sure how the process works, is it goes, he'll introduce it, and then, I don't know if he'll need additional support, but if, you know, Carrie, if you wanna visit with her a little bit about, you know, why she needs the money and those types of things, and I did get an email from her, she wants it for at least 10 years. A flipside of that, what Dan's talked about, if we get federal legislation passed, there would be no need for that 4% sales tax, which would be good for our community. We would be able to fully fund whatever she would need at the hospital through that payment. And then I think, continued, continued, I'll wait till you. Continued support for the four lane north of Holton. I know that 30 is the year.
Yes.
2030. I know how things change, and three years down the road, they go, oh, we're gonna make a different path. So, continued support for that, I think, is going forward to this community and to Brown County, all the counties that you represent.
Yep.
So, if you have the ability to keep your eye on that, you know, things do change somehow mysteriously at state level, and I don't know why. Anyway, that, I guess that's about all I have.
Yeah. What'd you get Dan to, meet Calvary, the Secretary of Transit.
Really nice guy.
Really nice guy. He, he actually travels 75 quite often, because his wife has family in Iowa, and they're in the Big Seven, so, well, they, he's now, I guess, yeah. And so, he's up and down the road all the time, so we actually spoke to him at the listing here, and he, he knew exactly what we were talking about. So, keep, keep good line of communication over with him, and he can be helpful a lot, help you a lot, or trying to get us on a, we're from King County all the way up to State Farm, so, I think we're gonna, that would be partnership there.
I don't have anything else.
No, do you have any questions of us?
Not at this point in time, really. This is more of, I mean, we've all been, it's a blind introduction, but it is more of a, hey, you know, I have a strong belief that in my capacity as representative of the, of the district and of members of the district, it really needs to be ground up, not top-down in tally, and so, the representation that I bring to the State House, it will be a lot of learning curve of the system. So, I've seen how law changes from a civilian's side.
Yeah.
Now I'll have a very strong firsthand knowledge and ability to learn how it operates from the inside, if you will. And so, understanding that is gonna be a big chunk of, my, my anticipation that that's gonna be a big chunk of this next year is learning that system. But having the communication channels set up, the formal ways, the phone numbers, the emails, specific topics that people have an interest on. I mean, it's not like this is a one meeting we're done, maybe, until next year. You know, I anticipate this to be an ongoing relationship where information and communication can be back and forth, and not just at the commissioner, not at the county commissioner, I mean, in chambers and commerce, looking to get with different community development groups and things of that nature as well. So, this is just a step one of, of how will we continue to represent and grow our communities, be represented and say.
Yeah, we'll be, I believe in January, I don't, I'm looking at my calendar here, there's a day where it's county days at the.
Yeah.
Legislature, so typically, public, or county commissioners and other personnel come down and just spend time going around visiting with your representation, so it's okay, we'll try to find your office and.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And come in to say hi.
Yep, we'll, we'll always be okay.
Okay. I appreciate that. I don't have anything else.
I can't think of anything. Congratulations once again.
Thank you.
Jumped right out of the frying pan and fire.
You know, I, I had a, if you would've asked me in March if I was interested in the political side of the position, I'd say, well, I'd be interested. Truly, it was an internal colleague in April when I started having a season, and one of those individuals, I was speaking with somebody in this conference, and it was Eagle Fails, who did, who.
Wasn't Carrie, was it?
It was not. You're not. But, but that stated very much, had, you're interested on the side, as you all know.
Yeah.
All right. Well, I appreciate you guys' time this morning. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Sean. Appreciate it.
Have you read the minutes?
I don't know.
Uh, yeah, I saw the three dozen, and there's changes we need to make.
If you wanna have a conversation with Scott, let me, you try to call Sean here. Um, if you wanna have a conversation with Scott, let me, you try to call Sean here. Hi, Scott, this is Keith. Right there. Oh, are you done with your appointment, or is it gonna be a holiday thing, or? Okay, um, okay, we'll, don't worry about it. Take care of your wife, and we'll, we'll talk later. No, no, no. It's all good. All right, please, bye.
How's she doing?
She's got another appointment. Here's to resignation, uh, phrase for, for sheriff. Yeah. Somebody's interested in the N P I, U S L training institute, you can go to that. We do have a, an agreement for disposal hospitals after twenty-fourth year or January.
Now, just so you know, you've got the signed copy back. That's a signed copy of the document.
Okay. Okay, that's all we need. Do we want to continue to be members of the League of Kansas P S College?
Oh, I thought we kicked that out a year or two ago, because we didn't understand.
Who we want, yeah.
We thought it was due to petition services from K A C.
Yeah, technically, I mean, Kansas League is mostly city to cities, and I think they're open. I think they send us a bill as if, here, we wanted to be, give the bill, it would be due by this amount. I don't think, to my knowledge, we won't have to.
We haven't been to last year.
Three years, yeah.
That's all I thought.
So if you guys don't want that?
I think, I think K A C is what we need to be enough, enough League of Kansas College that much.
Yeah, it's nine hundred dollars.
Yeah, I'm fine with that also, I don't really need that. Thank you, I mean, I think that's a little, uh, deal. Yes. The, uh, the email from the N R C S office will table until next week, to get more information back to K on that.
Dan, this is, um, waste livestock, waste management, not referred to the body, or considering their license for them, if there's no other thing else in area two, or maybe state, I'm not sure. That's the only one in this area. Any updates on it?
Um, we have a meeting within last week, and we agreed to do our patient, that's our last still.
This, I talked to Pat earlier this morning, he told me that the internet was down, but they believe it's a giant, a giant issue.
Yeah, we're gonna switch out.
So the judge, Honorable Judge Jeff Eller, is asking us to consider increasing our juror pay from what we currently do, ten, ten dollars if you show up, twenty if you're chosen, plus mileage. Both, both receive mileage, but twenty a day if you're putting in the box, or an alternate. He would like us to up that to twenty and fifty, plus mileage. I'm not sure where we come up with the money.
I don't know where we can come up with money.
Because that would've been information we would've probably needed in May, not December.
Of course, yeah.
I'm sure you guys have, you know.
Jury trial.
Quite few. A lot of bad guys got a little lack of five high life.
That's something we tried budgeting for, but for this year, I don't see what we do.
So then, so then our, yeah, we're already short.
Sixty-eight thousand?
So, and why is that? But you're saying sixty-eight thousand, why is that?
Is that the correct number?
Oh, they're talking for the courts, and they're running.
They're over budget, sixty-eight thousand dollars.
Courts are over budget, we're not.
Well, the money comes through them anyway, I bet you.
Right, and they brought in, I think if it balances out, they brought in around fifty thousand.
Oh, okay. Twenty thousand, so that would just mean additional, however many dollars going forward, it's not any other.
Well, county general will have to cover it, and we don't have that money.
Yeah. So I'd say wait until next year, by now.
Yep.
At this point, then, we'll send a letter back to Joe Eller, telling him that we'll, we'll take it under consideration for the twenty twenty-six budget, if there is no money available for this, for the twenty twenty-five year. You all are three with that?
I agree, I agree. As I say, has anybody in K A C contacted you about new commissioner training?
Um, I don't.
Okay, all right, and I, I would highly recommend that you do it.
I'm excited.
I, I learned a lot in that day and a half, and it's, it's a good thing.
Sure, yep.
We have a gentleman who's currently up on the zoning appeals board, Carrie Ramazis?
Ramazis, it's a lady.
Yeah, she's out by Soldier.
Carrie, okay. Uh, she'd like to, to continue on that, have no problem with that. I'd rather take a motion to approve or continue.
I will, yes, I'll be, I would take the motion that we.
Continue with it?
Yeah, we continue.
Look at this second appeals.
The movement segment on the paper, say aye?
Aye.
And then Scott, uh, if you wanna reach out, Mark, and just visit with Scott, maybe tomorrow?
Yeah, yeah, obviously.
Have that conversation, we're gonna run out there.
Yep. Can you do?
I don't know, you minutes.
You saying there are some corrections you found?
Yeah, uh, I think we need to put in there.
The road we went to look at?
Yep.
Okay.
And take out the ovens on both sides of the road.
Take out what, I'm sorry?
The ovens on both sides, or back on the street?
Gotcha, gotcha.
Yep.
Gotcha.
Three in the fourth of May, or is this, is, is there anything else?
Okay. Cool.
And Todd, if you get a definition between abandoning and, and disclosing, and you get some language on that that would be beneficial for us to read ahead of the meeting, how would you make a decision on that? That'd be great, thank you.
Gotcha. And just so that we know, we know too, what our liability issues are between the two.
Yeah.
All right, thank you. Have a good weekend.
All right, see ya. Can you talk to Martha?
I did not get ahold of Martha.
You're playing on.
That's all the list.
Doug, I've read them, I've read them Russian, feel a minimal correction.
So who? Did you have more?
No, you're, you want that change on the resident, we have them.
Uh, you do, I gave you.
Okay, great, uh, sorry.
Move the second all papers, aye?
Aye.
All papers, aye?
And just to let you guys know, I pulled me down to bench the other day, Keith, I did get my self nomination in for the K A C board, so they called your procedure, so I'm not holding back too much.
Christie, anything else you need action on? Okay, and your handbooks in the journal.
So, second?
Move the second all papers, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All the, same sign.
Hope to see you all Thursday evening, then come in Wednesday.
Wednesday's the dinner.
Celebration, retirement, okay, that's kind of good.
Okay, and that's at noon?